...through the hour, so this is a good time to remind everybody to turn off their speakers and put it on vibrate or something.
Yes, you're great.
Why?
Oh, no.
Not to suggest that you weren't great.
Charles won't be here tonight.
I just got that.
Okay.
He's traveling and I believe he's not going to be here next month either. He might get home, but just before.
I ran into him at coffee store.
Yeah.
Happy to have a small friend like that.
Yeah.
You've warned him that. I should be saying that. Okay, this meeting of the Cannon Beach Planning Commission has now come to order. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw one in a second.
Without objection, okay. Is, are there any corrections to the minutes? I gave Jill some typos, but I don't think any of them would be controversial. There were a couple of things in there that reminded me that things hadn't been resolved. Actually, let's see.
I had some.
Go ahead.
So, on page two, the last paragraph I brought up, Monday brought up, a few women.
Yes.
And then on...
Are you saying, what are you correcting? That that was really you that brought it up in the first place? Okay, I turned it to you. So, do you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then on page seven, here again, the second to the last, I was the one that recommended that we change the planting scheme to 12 inches, not 18 inches. And replanting, the original plant was 30% coverage, and I said it should be changed to 50% coverage for replanting.
Good.
And I'm not really sure on page 10, I don't think, I think that was the one that stated, this was, this is the middle of the third paragraph, Johnson stated Baldwin said he's pretty satisfied with the two feet, one inch caliber.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, well, I was the one that recommended two feet or one inch caliber, not Baldwin. And I wasn't sure about the last, second to the last one, Johnson and Andy stated people have a right to build houses.
No, I don't think I did either. I don't know.
I don't think I said that.
Shall we ask with that behind me? Try to figure out who said it.
Well, I mean, it's obvious that anybody that's going to build can build, so I don't know why I said that.
Is it agreeable that we take that sentence out unless it's determinable who said it, since neither Daryl or I claim it? No objections, okay.
Okay, and I'm saying page, page five, her question, the need to increase the DFE to something greater than plus four feet. It sounds like a question of need.
Oh, I said, I treated that sort of as a typo instead of change question to suggested. Is that agreeable?
Yes, thank you.
Other corrections or problems? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as corrected? I believe so. Second?
Second.
Without objection? Okay. Next matter. This is a case on judicial hearing regarding consideration of SR 18-5 request by Phil Check and Associates for a setback reduction in residential with a roof replacement and remodel at 148 North Larch. Phil Check and Associates, the applicant, on behalf of the property owner, requests a setback reduction in conjunction with a roof replacement and residential remodel from existing dweller. The setbacks requested are, from 15 feet zero inches to 12 feet zero inches in the front yard, and from 15 feet zero inches to five feet zero inches in the rear yard. The property is located at 148 North Larch Street, Gas Block 4603, MAP 51019, DD, and in a residential high-density archery zone. The property is owned by Janice H. Donnelly and Jillian?
Jillian.
Jillian. Jillian Donnelly. The request will be reviewed against Municipal Code Section 17.16.040.0B standards, which requires a minimum 15-foot yard setback, front yard setback, and then a 5-foot side yard setback, and Municipal Code Section 17.60.4.010 setback reduction provisions established. Does anyone object to jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commission member, lady or she, has a conflict of interest or personal bias?
Is this when I get asked a question about the plan?
About what?
About the plan to, for the variance.
No.
Okay, fair enough.
You're setting him up.
Okay, just asking.
Has any commission member had any ex parte contacts or made a site visit?
Site visit.
Okay, I have made a site visit, and in the process, I had a chat with the lady who owns the house immediately adjacent to the one in question. And she, she did not have any objections to the request, and in fact, she did not know a whole lot about it. And I walked around with her, and we sort of took a look at the outside of the place. Neither of us tried to convince the other or anything about it. On the other hand, I did in fact have a longish chat with her, and if anybody has any questions about that or any objections, I would be either around the table here or in the public, I would be happy to reply to them. That's not something that I usually do. Sometimes I'll sort of say hello to the person.
Thank you. For an ex parte contact, the requirement is that you state the substance of what you learned from those conversations.
Okay, thank you. I learned, I believe I learned that that house belongs to some people who owned at least one very nearby house, and that she seemed to be on good terms with them. That it was her opinion that the changes, as she understood them, would not have any bad effects on her or her property, nor as far as she could see on anybody else, if that seemed like a issue.
Absolutely, you're involved, but you know, the idea is that for ex parte contacts, people who might have a different position should be able to rebut what you learned somewhere else, and so that's why we want a substantive.
I should have asked you that eight years ago. Okay.
Was this the house to the west that you talked to?
Yes.
There's not a house to the west of the Donleys.
There is a house to the west.
There's a house to the south, and a house to the southwest of the Donleys.
Why don't you explain that when you...
Oh, okay, sorry.
This was a question of fact, but I had a conversation with a neighbor.
Yes.
And Jillian, okay. Meanwhile, this looks technical.
Yes, thank you. Does anybody want to challenge any of the commissioners for bias or ex parte contacts?
Thank you.
I'm going to answer that question right away. The Donleys actually own two houses around here, and this is not the one that that gentleman was thinking of. This is another house that they own, and I guess I would refer to the aerial photograph there. In the staff report, there's a little square drawn around this subject property, and it's clearly a house to the west of that. The Donleys also own a house to the northwest of that, which that gentleman is correct, there is no property to the west of it. So, same family.
Okay, to clarify, assuming that that photograph is oriented in the usual or itself...
The usual way.
Which is my understanding, having lived around here for a while. The one that's in the yellow box is the one that we're talking about.
Correct.
And the one that's to its left in the photograph...
Is the one to its west.
Is the one to my ability of scottling.
Yeah, so if you go across the driveway and then one more to the west, that's the other Donley house, I believe.
So, that, I think that's why I'm...
Yeah, so they don't, the family has two pieces of property here.
I watched, I know that there wasn't a property.
It's not, yeah, at least property, right?
So, the lot, the lot number would be the 4502?
Well, it's a good question, I don't know.
Sure, then...
If you go to the back of that packet, there should be a list of properties, and you'll see that the Donley family owns several of those in the northeast area.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's several properties owned by that family. Yeah, and this is only one of those. And so, the property he was referring to correctly does not have property to the west, but this is not that property, this is a different property.
So, the property that we're talking about is south of the easement, the road...
South of the driveway.
South of the driveway.
South of the driveway and adjacent to Larch.
Fair enough, okay.
So, so, back to that. So, this is a setback reduction, very similar to the setback reductions you had at the previous meetings, most recently at 3828 Pacific, and last year at 163 Orford, where somebody has an existing house that's noncompliant with respect to setbacks, they want to add something, do something to the roof, add a second story, do a dormer on the second floor, something like that, and they're not increasing the footprint, but part of that roof work encroaches into the setback the same way that the rest of the house encroaches. So, the setback, the footprint stays the same, but the encroachment is expanded in an upward direction, not in a horizontal direction. So, this is a similar situation to what you handled just last month on Pacific Drive. So, there is no additional horizontal encroachments in this case, there are no additional, there's no height variance required here, the proposal is compliant with the height limit. As on all of these, the key things that are, seem to be relevant here have to do with the impact on adjoining properties, the impact on views, the impact on solar access from adjoining properties. The other criteria are a little fairly straightforward. The one I would add to is that in A4, where the applicant has a choice of which of several factors they want to apply, they had suggested that rehabilitation of existing building where other reasonable alternatives do not exist is the correct one. I guess I would add that you might also look at permitting construction on a lot with unusual configuration, very small lot, corner lot, so it's subject to the corner lot setbacks in existing building. Those are, I mean, they're not rare, but they are not the norm for property in this town. I mean, it may seem like it's the norm for you, because that's what you hear all the time, but in fact, that's because you hear them all the time, but they're not the norm for residential lots in Cannon Beach generally. We've already gone through these pictures, this property takes access on a driveway, even though it does have frontage on Larch, the parking is on the east side of the property, and they do have sufficient on-street parking, so none of those other factors really come into play here.
Off-street parking.
Excuse me, off-street parking, I'm sorry. So, they really are maintaining all the other requirements with the exception of this setback question. The site plan, the pulled-out site plan submitted by them shows the way the house sits on the property, and the footprint doesn't change. The second pulled-out site plan labeled P2 shows the new roof, not the existing roof, so you have to kind of interpolate that in there. There is some email correspondence that I received, just an inquiry from a nearby property owner, and that's in the staff report, otherwise I didn't receive any correspondence on this.
Mark, did you send him information that he...
Yeah, I responded basically with a scan of the packet and didn't hear further from them. That, the party that requested that information, and I can't remember who all was on the planning commission, they were before you, two years ago, with a similar request involving their deck and parking problems.
Oh, yeah.
If you remember, they're...
I didn't walk back there, but it was looking good from where we were.
Yeah, I think that was at least two years ago that you heard that other matter, but it was in the same vicinity, slightly different request.
Thank you. Now, this is the call for public testimony. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in staff reports and listed on the criteria sheets next to the west door right there. And testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria or other criteria, where those criteria or other criteria do not meet Municipal Code, which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, which is this, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, arguments, or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such requests by continuing the public hearing or leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, or evidence. Persons who testify shall first receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify whom they represent. Is their presentation by the applicant? Are their presentations by proponents? That's probably you. No?
I haven't seen the plans, so I'm just learning about them right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I misunderstood who you were.
Yeah, I own a property in that general area.
You need to get him up here and have him recognized.
Are you just here to find out what was going on, or do you like that?
I am a property owner, I just wanted to know what the plans were. So, I did not realize that the Donleys owned multiple homes in that area. So, the home that I thought this was about is directly behind home.
Get him up to it.
Yeah. Okay, Mark is going to give him a copy of the...
Superiors.
So, there is no presentation by the applicant, nor by a proponent, are there presentations by up-owners? I'm not sure if there's anything for the staff to respond to.
No, you may want to give him a moment or two to look at the plans.
That would be, yeah.
Yeah, I...
Ma'am?
I'm here with Phil Check and Associates. We're the architect firm that we're representing the homeowner.
Yes.
So, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I don't know if it would be helpful for me to explain anything in more detail.
We've got to get both of these people's on-the-record name and address.
Yes, she's in lieu of the applicant, and so, yes, we have your name and your mailing address.
Oh, I speak it? Do I speak my personal home address or my business work?
Business mailing.
Okay, my name is Naomi, N-A-O-M-I, Schiesel, S-C-H-I-E-S-V-L. I'm with Phil Check and Associates. The mailing address is 148 B, as in Boy Avenue, that's Suite 100 in Lake Oswego, Oregon, 97034.
Tell us, tell us about it.
So, our client, the Donleys, came to us wanting to mainly replace the roof, was how this conversation started. The roof is a mismatch of many years of who knows what remodels, and so they wanted a more of a cotted beach cohesive look for the roof, and it's a very small home on a very small lot. And when we were discussing redoing the roof, we also discussed adding a dormer on the second floor, because it's really almost like a studio, as is right now, so adding a dormer upstairs so that there could be, it would either be a loft or perhaps a bedroom. We didn't get into specifics, but just add a little bit more space.
Let me ask you, I'm guessing that now that you're at this point in things, that there are some drawings that envision how big it would be, would it be big enough to satisfy the code requirements for habitable space?
Yes.
Okay.
And I sent Mark the, I mean, it's in draft form, and I think, I don't know, I don't know if I saw what was included in your packet, but was this added to the, okay, yeah. So, this is kind of the schematic.
S sheet P2 in your packet, the large format piece.
So, in this design, it's just a loft upstairs.
Yes, I'm sorry.
And the dormer, in fact, is actually not within the setbacks, so for that portion of the remodel, we're not actually proposing a dormer within the setbacks, but we are requesting the reduction so that we can replace the entire roof on the home. So...
Any questions? So, I wanted to know, on your plan, you were calling for a ladder step up to the loft, and so where is that located? At one place it says kitchen, and I'm not sure on the drawing where you have the kitchen and bedroom, I'm not seeing where that ladder is.
So, it's not shown on the plan view on this one, but it would be on the right side of the bedroom, kind of behind the couch, which is where it's shown on that section. The section is kind of misleading, but it's showing the bedroom wall, and then the kitchen is behind it. So, in this scheme, there's a ladder on that living room wall.
Well, I, if you'll come around and show me on here, is that...
Sure. Look here. So, if you're looking at this...
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the living room wall. Oh, so for some reason, you're not seeing, this is different than my plan. There's actually a kitchen elevation on my plan. I'm not sure my...
Okay, so then...
There's a loft there.
So, so then, how far in does this go into, does this go into the center of the house? The loft here?
It's above the bedroom, it's basically the exact shape of the bedroom, the stack on top, and then a dormer, so that you have the ceiling there.
And then, so that this is, this is the dormer up here, isn't this the dormer? I mean, the loft.
So, this is the porch, and then here's the dormer on the back side.
Okay, but the loft is not, the loft is over here.
Right.
How about, okay, so, we're getting, some of us over here are getting the drift of this.
Yeah.
How about, so, how about taking this, this one, which is quite, we have, and standing where we can all sort of see you and point at that and see if people can...
Okay, so, this section is showing, we're cutting through basically right here, so you're looking this way, so this wall is this bedroom, the outside of this bedroom wall on the living room side, and then the kitchen is behind it. So, you're looking, you're seeing the kitchen, if you were standing right here, you would see this bedroom wall, and then you would see the kitchen back here.
I don't think that's working, how about standing sort of out in the middle of there and have a better shot? Somebody's got to...
I think she wants to make sure the audience can see as well.
So, I'm presenting to you?
You are presenting.
Okay.
You're presenting to us, how about standing out in the middle of there?
Oh, sure. Do you want me to repeat that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is the section view, it's like we're standing, say we're standing in front of the fireplace, and we are facing this wall, so you're seeing on this section, you're seeing the elevation of this wall with the ladder, which isn't shown on the plan, but it would be right here on this wall. And then you're looking back, and you're seeing the kitchen back behind.
Okay.
So, it's like cutting the house in half. And so, the, on, let's see, orient myself here. So, then next to it, you can see the exterior version, so this is looking at the outside of the house from this side, so you're seeing the covered porch, and this has, this does have, we revised the roof slope in this, so this isn't the current condition. And then you can see the dormer is on the back above this bedroom, so this is the dormer roof line, and then there's the house roof line below.
How much square footage would you be adding to this?
Well, the bedroom is 99 by 108, so 100 square feet, give or take. Yeah.
And do you know if it's used as a rental?
No, it's not used as a rental.
So, can somebody know whether it's to code to have the access to the loft, the ladder or something?
It's a building code question that often comes up, and a lot of it has to do with how they characterize it on the plans, whether there's egress from upstairs, the steepness of that pattern, and since this is not in a final form yet, I'd hesitate to try to rule on it.
Right, and I know, they're not trying to create a bedroom, it would be more like an accessory space.
Yeah.
So, but if it's not, you know, they want to be code compliant, so if they have to have stairs, or if they're, you know, whatever the requirements are, we can modify the plan.
There are many ways of handling this.
I think I've encouraged this to get considerably outside the scope of what we really need to talk about, I'll give that back.
Oh, who's gonna...
If it has been a rental and there were a lot more square footage, the parking situation...
Yeah, yeah, this is a short-term rental issue that comes up, this mostly why this comes up, where people want to count a loft as a bedroom for short-term rental purposes, or I can't count it, so that affects their occupancy, it's tied to parking, but that hasn't been the case here, and if they get this approval for something that looks an awful lot like this, and it's a loft, it won't count as a bedroom for short-term rental purposes.
And they don't intend, this is for her and her mother, like this is, yeah, they intend to use it personally, so they have no interest in a rental.
And so, is that as this is conceived here, is this a ladder or is it a stairway? Is it a straight-up ladder?
It's a ladder in this proposal, but it's, it's very, it's a very loose proposal that we haven't refined, we just wanted to see if we could even replace the roof first, so...
Okay, is there any other questions?
So, then, the porch, new porch, built on the north side, does that go into the house?
It ties into the roof.
Can you, can you, from the inside of the house, can you go out into that space?
No, no.
Okay, and then the support beams for that, what's the dimension of those? Is that four by fours, six by six?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm not sure, but I would imagine that whatever they're required to be to support that roof structure, I would guess six by six, but...
Anything else?
It looks like it might be eight by eight on the plan, just looking at the scale, but I'm not...
Anything else?
It looks like it might be eight by eight on the plan, just looking at the scale, but I'm not entirely sure.
The, the request talks about rehabilitation of existing building where no other reasonable alternative exists. And below it, is this setback reduction will allow homeowners to obtain a permit to replace roof. But we're talking, are we talking about replacing the roof? Or are we talking about replacing the entire structure of the upstairs of the building?
They would like to replace the roof and add that dormer on that. I mean, they consider that a part of the interior remodel because they're not really changing the footprint of the home. But if that's a deal breaker, I'm sure that they would get rid of the dormer.
What I'm saying is that this really isn't, you're doing more than just replacing the roof. And the request is to approve this setback reduction in order to replace the roof. So which is it?
Well, it's both. So we, this was my understanding of how we were to proceed with any sort of remodel. I reached out to Mark and we emailed back and forth. And I asked, you know, how do we go about this? We have a home that's within the setbacks. And he said, well, we'll need to do a setback reduction application. So we prepared the setback reduction application in order to do that.
Are you changing the pitch of the roof? Is my impression from this.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So that roof will go from, down to someplace. The roof is shorter in the front.
Right, they're proposing to increase the pitch.
Right.
To give it more of a cottage look. I don't know what the.
And then put a dormer out the back.
Right.
And is the roof height becoming higher?
Yes, yes.
And the roof is going no further forward of the house?
No.
Same, same distance?
Actually, it might be less than it was before.
Any more questions for, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, so at the middle, since we've had this much back and forth, we want to have in the record in the meeting.
Sure.
Who you are and where you live.
Sure.
I'm Ben Morell. I speak on behalf of my fiancee. We live at 164 North Large, or that's our property is 164 North Large. We currently live in Seattle at 2960 Southwest Raymond, Seattle 98126.
And why don't you spell your last name for purposes of record?
I've thought of.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Ben Morell, Stacy Baker. After seeing the plans, I have no objections to it. It does appear that the addition, besides the shed dormer, it looks, it appears like the front porch is extended into the front yard. So I have no problem with it. I actually welcome the updating of that property. I fully support it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, be back. Thank you.
Anybody else who has something to say about this? Mark?
Just on this whole roof replacement thing, I have these discussions, maybe not daily, but regularly with people. Sometimes when people say I'm replacing the roof, they mean they're replacing shingles, which you have to do every 20 or 30 years anyway. If that had been the case here, that would have been an administrative approval at the most. But other times when people say they're replacing the roof, they're doing what is proposed here, literally rebuilding the roof in a different configuration, or in this case, a slightly different height with dormers. And that's, that's the difference. So when people say I'm replacing the roof, do I need a permit? I have to parse it out a lot further than that.
Well, it's also expanding the building.
Yeah.
Thank you. No indication that the hearing is being continued, so any reason not to close the public hearing, if you're concerned. Okay, I do so. I'll make a comment that I, in the drawing, I was walking around there. I had, let's see if we can look at the, it's going to show up on here. If you look, if you go south and west, there's an apartment house that has a view over the roof of the subject building. And I climbed up the stairway to the porch there to see whether, whether those folks were going to lose any view. And it's like, they're going to, they're not even going to lose a view of the hillside. And they may lose a little bit of the hill view of the buildings in that shopping center. Rent-a-mart apartment. But it didn't look like it was going to block, block anything, other than the seasonal, the folks that I talked to. Okay, I'm from there. Does anybody have an opinion about whether we should approve this? I can't see, on the one hand, it's not, doesn't seem to be doing anybody harm. And on the other hand, if we're going to take the generalization literally, that we don't want people to expand their buildings, even in the same footprint, within, under that much into the setback, and somebody might think we ought to refuse it.
Well, it's a substandard lot that we're allowing to add square footage to, which is increasing the non-conforming use.
Yes.
If everybody is interested in accepting this, I would certainly put some kind of a restriction about it becoming a rental at any point because they're adding.
Can we do that?
A lot.
I assume you mean a short-term rental.
Pardon me?
You mean a short-term rental?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can tie it to one of the approval criterion.
Because that would be the only way I'd want to accept it.
Other opinions?
Well, they're not increasing, I mean, they're not increasing the footprint of the building. They're not going farther into the, they're not going farther into the setback. And that's what I'm looking at. We have, we approved people who have actually gone farther into the setback.
But it's a 40 by 50 foot square lot. I think the other ones we've approved were bigger.
Yeah.
And it's adding a potential bedroom.
Yeah, potential. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
I think it's going to, it's kind of a crappy looking house at the moment. I suspect that when they're done, it's going to.
It'll look a lot nicer, but.
I thought all the work was going to be done in a period.
Well, that is what it said.
So I think it would be re-shingling the house on the outside in your addition or roof pitch.
The fact that it's a non-conforming smaller lot actually in some ways speaks more to a permitting, because that is an exception. You have a lot that's, you know, you have something, a configuration in your lot that makes it unusual, and here we have that.
Well, the structure already is exceptional. I mean, it's already a violation of.
Right, like so many houses are in Cannon Beach.
Exactly.
I mean, because, you know, there was no support of code. So all I'm saying is we permitted this same kind of thing so many times. And even sometimes when people have made their, their non-conformance larger, in this case, they're not doing that. They're not extending any farther into the setback.
Into the footprint.
Right. So that, for that reason, I just don't see any, any reason to deny it.
I'd have to agree with them, because we have approved them in the past.
But would you put a restriction?
They could put a restriction.
Well, I'd love to do that, sure. If that's legal.
Ron, can you make the motion so you can get the restriction?
I guess I'd like to approve it with the condition that it not be allowed to be a short rental.
Is that a way that we're allowed to capture?
Is possible?
I'm going to have to tie that back to a criteria, one of the criterion in the findings. And I haven't really thought that through yet. I don't really want to do this on the fly either, so let's assume that it is for now and.
So you were talking earlier, Mark, about this is the difference between being a bedroom versus a loft in terms of rentals.
Yeah, we generally can't allow lofts to be bedrooms in short-term rentals for code reasons. But there are, there are ways for loft-like areas to be bedrooms in single-family residences, because a different code is applicable there. And then this whole thing about where the line is between a loft and an open space that has stairs up to it relates to how steep the climb is and whether there's egress up there. So there's a lot of code questions that we don't know the answers to here, and you just can't know them this early.
Well, you know, maybe this is premature. You know, maybe since we don't know exactly what's going to happen here, why should we approve or disapprove of this at this point?
Can we put it off until we've got something of a level of a building permit application?
Well, if you, yeah, you can do that.
I can understand that the owner doesn't want to spend the additional money on that. You know, this is the in-for-a-penny, and they're not necessarily in-for-a-pound at this point. They want to know that they would be able to do it before they spend the money on more detailed plans.
Well, let me turn back the clock a minute here. If you want to tie this, if you want a condition that restricts this to no short-term rentals, I think we can write something that ties it to the amount of privacy that would be enjoyed by a budding property because of the parade of strangers that would be renting this house. That's a, perhaps a stretch, and I haven't really thought this through. And you, I think you could do that, or I think I could write something that would support that. I'm kind of waiting for Bill to tell me like how you could, or sure we could. That's, I guess, if the condition is what you need here, I would, I guess my recommendation is to go ahead and do that. If the applicant has a problem with it, they have an opportunity to appeal that. And we have an opportunity to fix it if we've made a mistake.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll call that.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnt?
Just be a country and host and know.
Chair Lundie?
Yes. Okay.
So I'm going to write those findings up. I'll ask Bill to look them over, which is not what we normally do. But this is a, has some, this little extra bit in it. And we'll hopefully get those out tomorrow.
Good. I'm going to be unavailable at least on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. So tomorrow, if you.
I've got something for you to sign tonight.
Okay. Next is continuation of public hearing in consideration of ZO 18-01 and CP 18-01, For New Management Plan Amendments. ZO 18-01 and CP 18-01, City of Cannon Beach Request for zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan text amendments, updating the city's For New Management Plan. The zoning ordinance text amendment request will be reviewed against the criteria of Municipal Code, Section 17.86.070.8, Amendments, criteria. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment Request will be reviewed against the criteria of State Law 18. This hearing has been continued most immediately from August 23, 2018. The public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. Is there another special?
I'll just briefly update us through where we, where we are tonight. You directed us to make a number of changes that show up in three places here. The For New Management Plan itself, Hannah Dankbar, pressed made those changes. I worked with her on interpreting my notes, her notes, and the audio of the last meeting. And I'll tell you right up front that there were times when the two of us were not in agreement about what you were directing us to do. So there are places in here where we made our best, took our best shot at it. And you may well tell us that we missed the target entirely. There won't be any hard feelings about that on my end. Hannah can't be here tonight. Denise Lopman, her colleague, is here. And Denise is aware of all of this and what's going on. She may not be able to respond to a nuanced question about what Hannah was thinking in some particular place, but she is here. Hannah's work is in the For New Management Plan. I then, when she finished her edits, carried substantive changes forward into both the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and to the implementing ordinance, the zoning ordinance amendments. So you should generally see a notion carried forward, one, two, three, into those three separate documents. And I want to focus on two of them in particular to make sure that we were on the right track. One is the sea level rise component based what of the BFE plus four. Hannah put a table in there on page three, which comes from a 2015 NOAA document, which seems to have the most recent information on that topic. She and I both agreed that one foot is probably the number to use there. They go out to hundreds of a feet in that prediction table. And, you know, I guess ideally, one of, 2020 is awfully close, but 2040 is quite a ways off, so it's probably somewhere in there. We've added, in all of the language in here, said BFE plus four plus one for that sea level rise component. And you obviously could reach a different conclusion on that. The other element that I wanted to draw your attention to is in several places, you were talking about impacts on flora and fauna, particularly fauna and particularly razor clams. And so we carried that language forward in a number of different ways. Sometimes we talked about flora and fauna generally. Sometimes we talked about, that they convert fruits, and in particular razor clams. So we, I can't say that we were consistent in there. And part of it was because we had kind of different, that language shows that in different places. So take a look at that and again, tell us if we caught the substance of what you were trying to get at or not. That's really all I have. That brings you pretty much up to date on where the changes that are in front of you from your last meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Who's got something to say?
Well, I do. I think, I'm going to go back to this, the razor clam thing. I think it should say shellfish, not razor clams. Because we're concerned about all kinds of shellfish, whatever else might be there. And I think that when you just, when you just keep bringing up razor clams, it sounds like you have a thing about razor clams, which I know Joe does. But I, you know, and I understand that. Aren't we concerned about all?
And they are included.
Well, I know.
But the reason why I argue for including razor clams is they actually have a group of people who will fight for the issue. In other words, the condition of the razor clams are important to, you know, in a way that one or another small crustacean may not do to a group of people who will actually be watching for that. And I see that as, as a canary in the coal chat of warning that matters to people in a very specific hardcore way, including people who like clam chowder, which seems to be like the, you know, soup du jour of the Homewood Coast. which seems to be like the, you know, soup du jour of the Homewood Coast. And I, that's why I argued for including razor clams.
Razor clams, aren't they shellfish?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I don't like, I want to make sure that whoever does the review of the effects of dune removal and scraping and gashing and mowing and whatever else they're gonna do to these damn things, I want to know that there's gonna be an audience out there concerned enough to show up and fight for maintaining as natural an area as possible. And I think that if you just say shellfish in general, it becomes amorphous. And if you have one species out there that has some importance to a large enough group of people in the area, then it's going to focus the attention of this body down the line and the rest of the Danube Beach community to the issue. It's just, it's, it makes it real as opposed to generic.
I mean, my feeling is that shellfish should be included, but I like the idea of razor clam being stated specifically because we have a study that talks about what the survival rate is when you put so much sand over it. So we have an indicator scientifically of, you know, where there's a limitation on how much sand you want to put down.
No, I understand your point. It's not enough of a thing to get me worked up. I just thought it sort of hurt the integrity of the whole, it's sort of goofy, is how I saw it.
I have an apology to make, and that is that as many times as I've heard, my inability to remember names has picked in again. Would you remind me, ma'am?
Denise, Denise Loffman.
Loffman?
Yes.
Okay. Could, can we ask Ms. Loffman? Is there any problem at this point with my asking Kerr for a staff?
No, Chris is under contract with a staff, his staff one.
Is it reasonable to see razor clams as being an indicator species if there is such a, such a notion?
I don't, I don't see in there being any reason not to select it as a kind of species. Yeah.
My feeling is, Joe, along with the political aspect of this sees it, and for the reason that Errol brought up, that we have some data on it, for them, and that sort of puts them in the position of being an indicator species. Okay.
I would agree with you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I...
Plus the, so...
That's fine.
Recreational value?
That's...
You know, it may not be the same argument that you would use, but... Stayed working.
And also, I don't understand the plus one. I'm not, I was puzzled by that.
Or we got one foot?
Yeah, yeah. Where did that come from?
If you look at that table on page three, that's the projected sea level rise from this 2015 NOAA study. And it goes from 0.39 feet in 2020 to 1.41 feet on 2040. This is for the west coast of North America generally. And we, 2040 is a lot longer than you would expect to go between grading campaigns. So we looked at the 2020 number, which is probably too soon, being, what, 14 months away?
Right.
So we struck to one, sort of using the one foot as a number that was roughly between those. I think there's benefit to rounding the whole feet anyway. That's the way the BFE plus fours work. They actually do the calculation out to tenths of a foot, for regulatory purposes, they round it. I'm not saying that one foot's the right number, but that's how we got to that number.
Okay, no, that's...
It was those, that exercise.
Could I add something to that?
She was, Chris was intimately involved in that whole discussion, so yeah.
Please.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to add, because Hannah and I talked about this. So the, this projected rise in sea level is, you know, from NOAA's sea level viewer, it's taken from the data that's based on the Astoria Gauge at Ton Point. And this chart is the extreme level. So it goes from extreme down to high, intermediate, high, intermediate, and low. So when Hannah put this together for you guys, she, she just went with the extreme number, and that's how she and Mark got the plus one. If this body wanted to go with one of the lower levels, you know, all of it's a projection right now by NOAA. So she just assumed that the extreme was probably the most conservative.
Okay, thanks.
And next I would add, if you want to do any kind of add-on for sea level rise, I would try to parse it as one. It's either, it's either one or zero. And so if you want it to be a number greater than zero, I would go with one, even though that's the extreme, and you could probably make an argument for a lesser number.
I have two questions.
Getting back to the flora and fauna and the number three, I'd like to see the whole statement in it instead of just pieces of it.
Where, how do you...
Okay, it would be like on nine, it would be the number three at the top of the page, to maintain valuable habitat for a wide range of plants and animals, such as shellfish, including razor clams. I'd like to see that in each one of the times that it's brought up, because it consistently changes like Mark was mentioning, and I think it would just be a good reminder of what that might show you.
So that's the preferred kind of formation of that language there?
I'd like to see that.
I lost track, where are we on page nine?
Number nine, you know, how you go down the prioritize objectives.
I think I'm on a different page now.
It's on page nine at the top, near the top. It starts number two and then number three.
But there are many times that you go throughout this page.
Yeah, that's repeated.
Oh, okay.
And it's not repeated fully.
Oh.
Yeah, we did not get that consistent. You're right.
And I think sometimes you lose track of whether it's gonna be about the clams or about the animals and plants, and so I was just hoping you could have that.
Yeah, I agree. I think the, all five of them should be stated consistently throughout the review.
But, so that, that number three on the top of page nine is the preferred construction for that roughly?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is a consensus, right?
Is that where we want the razor, is that the, the item where we want the razor clams up?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to have that with Joe's wording?
It's already has razor clams.
I beg your pardon?
It says razor clams.
Including...
It does, but then you'll go throughout the body for...
Number three.
It's not...
You're looking, what you're looking at looks different.
I'm looking at an old version of it.
Oh, you are.
This page, three.
It says razor clams.
This page.
Yeah. So, but to give guidance to Mark, are we all on consensus about that? Because so he just, so he just goes back over the...
Yes.
It's... Yes?
I am.
I am.
I am. Okay.
I've got too many versions sometimes.
So aren't, taken out completely the amount of feet, et cetera, et cetera? Instead...
I didn't hear that.
Taken out completely, you know, the designation of how many feet can be graded, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, that's gone.
Each time, it's a conditional use permit?
Correct.
Okay. And that's, yeah, that's what we all wanted.
Yeah, that shows up in, should show up in the plan, but it definitely shows up in the policies and general ordinances.
And another thing I wanted to kind of re-bring up, and it had to do, it's on page 18, with amendments program. And I guess, I guess I can get more clarification from you on this, but I looked up how tall salal can grow, and it can grow to be 10 feet tall. And then also shore pines can be 10 feet tall, and I think...
They can be a lot taller than that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was concerned about the height that some of these suggested plants can be, because they'll create their own environment at some point, which isn't dunes.
Well, with salal, I would say that with salal and sand, you're not ever going to get anything that reach that height. But certainly you do with a pine. I mean, I've got a 40-foot pine, I've got a short pine, so...
Well, if you go down to Brookings and Bandon area, you'll see salal that's really tall.
Yeah, but on the beach itself, is that what you're saying?
Yep, at the Oregon State Parks.
I agree. Is it in amongst trees, or is it by itself? Is it icy?
Kind of by itself.
Really? Brookings has often warm weather.
It is warm weather. Anyway, I just thought I'd bring it up because I was concerned about it being an all plant. We're talking about views.
Do you want to, do I do anything about that?
Well, I can give you a little bit of background. When it, once that shore pine is greater than six inches, our tree removal ordinance would kick in and prevent that tree from being removed for view purposes anyway, unless it was dead disease dying, posed as some safety hazard, something like that. So if somebody said that shore pine is 10 feet tall and six inches around, and it's blocking my view, the tree removal ordinance would say, well, that doesn't matter, it's there. The salal question, and then just other vegetation generally, there is a lot of, you know, there's a number of properties that do trim that vegetation, not annually, but every other annual type basis. And we, there will be some pushback on that, I suspect, from those property owners. I don't get very many tree removal permits out on the ocean dunes for any reason, actually. Just aren't that many trees out there to cut, and haven't had any for view purposes, because we can't approve it anyway.
I had a few starting to grow up in Chapman Point.
Yeah, I think at some point in Chapman Point, they're gonna have, that's gonna become an issue. They have some D restrictions there that address that too, but I, you're right, our tree removal ordinance will kick in, and for view-related purposes, they're not gonna be approvable, at least under our current ordinance.
Any suggestions about how to deal with that issue?
Well, I would just say, the most people home houses are on the oceanfront. We have, you know, it's a special code that will allow for removing blockages to views.
Well, we have that now, but you're talking about deleting it.
Yeah.
For trees?
For all vegetation, that language on the bottom of page 18, that was my understanding of your direction last time. You did not want to see people doing beach grass maintenance in dunes. And that's almost entirely view-related. And that covers beach grass, but it also covers the other plants that are growing out there, including salals.
I think that is what the sector's...
That was my understanding.
I agree, sir.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry, I was joking. It's my, my...
How long is that?
My argument is I ought to be able to remove alders and spruce trees that grow up, from after I build a house, I'd be able to remove those blockages to my ocean view or snip it.
Does anybody have an idea, suggestions about that? I live in... How, how do we grow?
I don't know.
What was your question?
And the issue has been brought up, that there are kinds of plants that can grow in dunes. And I think we, at some point, we said we would encourage those in addition to establish beach grass. And my understanding was at the point that they could grow up to where there would be substantial blockages to views. Maybe I fell asleep in the middle of this, but that was the way I understood.
Well...
And if we don't want that to happen, we want it around here.
I thought we had, yeah, so we have, on, on page 24, we don't have any trees listed there. We do have salal. We have huckleberry, we have peat and lupin, but we don't have any trees listed there.
I think part of the reason is, is that the places that are graded are 100% free of trees, at least in the two places we allow them now. And so I don't think we would want to allow grading for view and then encourage or require people to plant trees in that area. So if, you know, if that changes in the future, if there are other areas added to the grading regime, then you probably would have to revisit that and think it through again. But right now, there are no trees growing in those areas, and we probably don't want to change that.
True. But you do get volunteer trees that come into these areas.
Yeah.
And so that's, that would be my concern, is that you would get alders, or you would get something that would come in that would be invasive. But in terms of the list here, I'm certainly in favor of the shortest that we have here. And it doesn't include trees.
Okay? Everybody satisfied that we can move on to other issues?
Are you a gentleman?
No. I wanted to bring up something that I mentioned to Mark before the meeting, and he agreed that it's not really consistently resolved. And that is, we've got at least two or three places where we've got some version of this statement that I'm reading from page 21, about a couple inches down into the text, and highlighted included. Failure to submit the required monitoring reports will result in a penalty and will prevent future grading permits to be issued for the area. And I would interpret that as meaning error. And some, some other place, it says, until the monitoring reports are up to date. And I think that those are sort of polar, opposite positions, and we've got both of them. And I think that we probably want something in between, or at least I would like to see something in mine.
Yeah, the second language you quoted is on page seven of Attachment C, which is the zoning ordinance near the bottom. It says inadequate or incomplete monitoring reports shall be the basis for denying future four-dim grading permit requests until monitoring reports are completed and up to date. So, yeah, you need, I agree with Bob.
I'd like to see something.
We need some closure on that. I don't know if that's the closure you have in mind, but you do need something to keep that from being open.
That's not punitive, to say, you know, naughty, naughty, until you fix it. That's not, you know, punitive.
And I agree that it should be very punitive to some degree, but possibly saying you can never do it again. Nobody can ever, you know, don't bother applying for grading ever, ever again, if that property is...
For a period of five years, or for a period of three years, or something like that.
Well, I thought that there was language in here that said that they couldn't do anything for five years.
Well, there may be another place where...
I don't understand that. I think we talked about...
Why don't we talk about, about the five-year...
Yeah, tell me what you want, and I'll make sure they get lined up correctly, because it could be positive.
Tell Mark or his successor to...
I'm trying to get this set up for my successor.
Yeah, you are.
Well, I thought I read that there was, they could not do any sand removal for up to five years if they violated that. to five years if they violated that.
I can make those all read that way, if that's, if that's the direction you want to go.
See, I couldn't find it.
Do we want to have it for some number of years after the monitoring reports have all been brought up today? I think that might be a better timing.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. So a set period of time, and I don't think up to works, I think you have that set period.
I, I agree strongly.
Four or five years.
I don't, I actually tell you the truth, I don't know if it matters.
But we want to say five years.
I think we want to say some number of years after the reports have been brought up today.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think this is something to worry about, consequences that you may anticipate. You know, a five-year period of time, we could see dunes disappearing, increasing, doubling, tripling in height. We don't really know what might happen over a five-year period. And that really, that only makes the situation worse when you actually have to get around to, to making a decision about, about removing dune or talking about.
So what do you think, a two-year period? The reason of what we're in-
All the rest needs to get $1,000?
And to chop the tops off those spruce trees.
I don't know, I just, I, I worry about trying to put a time period, you know, anywhere close to five years, you know, maybe, maybe a two-year period, which is going to cost some money, and it's going to affect people who want to follow the monitoring.
You know, but what we're asking them to do is not, asking them to do the mon, I mean, big deal, that's, you know, that's what we're asking them to do, and if they don't do it, then we shouldn't, you know, really care about how, how onerous it is, because this is something that they should be doing, and I, and I think they will do it.
Let me answer this question. Do we think that the prospect of being refused, the, the permission to apply for another permit for two years will make a significant probability, increase in probability that people turn in their, their reports on time? Do we think the five years will?
Two, two years.
I think the main point is make it something-
What's going to work?
That people will make, man, I'm going to be darn sure that I don't miss that.
Well, you know, there, there could be a monetary fine, plus two years after all required reports have been submitted. In other words, you're going to, people are going to get hit by a penalty that is serious money.
On doubling the application fee?
Oh, I don't, I don't think the money thing is going to make a difference.
I like five years myself.
Yeah, I, I, money thing, it's, that's all relative, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I just, I, I feel that our successors on this board are going to, are going to be living with the consequences of that, having to face this, you know, this god-awful, you know, argument that we've been having here for, how long has it been? Since I've been on this commission?
Mark, please.
On that, on the numerical standard, say, let's call it five years, whatever it ends up, that's a numerical standard, and the concern that Commissioner Burnham, that I think you were raising, that what about an emergency or circumstances are different. Because it's a numerical standard, somebody could seek a variance to that, as with any other numerical standard. So that gives you at least the potential for that escape hatch for unforeseen circumstances or an emergency situation that we aren't foreseeing tonight. I don't know if that's enough of a, a safe, safety valve for this, but it is, it is a way out of that. If somebody said, "Holy cow, you penalized me for five years, but things have really changed here," or "There's new owners," or something like that, we shouldn't be saddled with the sins of our forbearers here. So there's, it might get you, might give you at least, and those variances have to come to this body, so it gives you a safety valve and some control over that, if that's the direction you're headed.
Yeah, I like five years, too.
Five years?
It's got a nice ring to it.
Uh, I sense that someone is prepared to make a motion.
I look for five years.
Second.
There's a pretty clear consensus here, I don't even know if you should do that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Commissioner Patrick's-
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bert?
Uh, yes.
And Chair Lundin?
Yes.
So if they get through the thing, it'll be consistent.
Yeah, that, that language appears in several places, so I'll have to carry that forward.
As usual, I made some, some other suggestive changes, but I don't think they're controversial. I, that was one that I thought would be controversial, so I brought it up. Are there other issues that people think that we need to work out? Personally, I would like to see a version that's got everything incorporated, and it's potentially final before we actually approve this.
That's what I was going to ask you, are you ready to now look at a kind of a consolidated version that doesn't have all these strikeouts and multicolored edition?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, I feel like the amendments have pretty much all been included in this since then, just to finalize.
Good.
Yeah, you guys did a good job.
So, I mean, I'm careful about saying this because I don't want to jinx it. I guess if that's the case, what I'll do is I'll bring this to your next meeting on October 25th in a consolidated form that's kind of ready, you've made a recommendation onto the city council. And we will tentatively schedule this for city council hearings. The earliest it could be would be December, I think we're probably, honestly looking at January for their, they'll have to run hearings on this, too. But so I'll go ahead and program this in for October 25th for you guys to make a recommendation to the city council with a consolidated version of this. Doesn't mean you can't make changes then, but-
Okay, good.
We'll leave all the editorial stuff behind at that point.
As a postscript to that, looking back at our meeting a few months ago with the city council, you have, or does anybody have any thoughts about things that we ought to, our comments or recommendations or something like that, that we ought to send a company, our approved version, to make it more likely that the city council will understand why we've decided the things that we have, and that make it more likely, you know, that we know how we would like to see them, and they will too.
Well, the things that, I, I would suspect that the things you spent the most time talking about and worrying over are likely to be the same things they're going to feel the same way about. I mean, four of the five current council members came off of a planning commission. You may have one future council member here with you tonight, so I suspect that they're going to see this not exactly the same way, but I bet their concerns are going to be roughly aligned with yours. So, yeah, if, when you make your motion, there are three or five or 10 things that stand out as, as important points, I would put it in the discussion, we'll make sure it's in the minutes, and that's what we'll, they'll get.
And some of the council members actually listen to the tapes.
Some of them listen to the tapes. I know they read the minutes because they asked me about them, so they, you know, if you make kind of succinct statements that are, that will really stand out in minutes, that's the kind of thing that I think will convey your message to them. And October 25th, Jeff will be here, my successor, and you really probably, and I've tried to bring Jeff up to speed on this, but obviously he's starting at a different place, and kind of a robust discussion in front of him probably is beneficial, even if it seems somewhat repetitive, because he really needs to hear that to kind of carry this forward, because in January, I don't intend to be at that city council meeting.
Have you been listening to any of the tapes and other ones?
The tapes are all available, and I will be at the October 25th meeting.
November?
Uh, no. Not as soon as-
Out riding Spicet.
I have other plans.
Okay, we'll be long to tree removal ordinance then. Consideration, continuation of the consideration of ZO 18, and the tree removal ordinance amendments. ZO 18, or three?
Sure, she'll step down, and she'll step back.
City of Tennessee requests presumed ordinance, section amendments of chapter 17.70, tree removal. The proposed amendments address the protection of trees from unintended damage during construction. The request will be reviewed against the criteria of the municipal code, section 17.86.070.1A, amendment's criteria. Consideration of this item has been continued from August 23rd, 2018 meeting. Public testimony portion of the hearing will close. Okay, so, let's see what we can do. Mark, can you give the reminders about?
Sure, let me get you up to speed on this. Attachment A, I've color-coded these amendments, the last one you made are in blue, and I, I feel like I caught them all with, with one exception. There was some discussion about having a, and I'm characterizing this the way I understand it, and I didn't include it because I didn't fully understand it, but having at the applicant's option two different methods for determining the tree impact, the tree removal impact area, or the root zone, or the, the impact area, I think we're calling it. I did not include that because my notes failed me, and I could not glean two things from the discussion. One, whether there really was a consensus on that item, and two, exactly how that might work, or even approximately how that might work. So if that's still, if you could have a discussion about that point, and we could finalize that, I could, I could possibly also bring this to you for a final action on October 25th, a final recommendation.
Let me tell you what has, the person who proposed that solution to it, I'll tell you what I think was said and where we left it. There were two proposed ones, which I think of as being a geometric rule, and says it's got to be, you know, this far in relationship to the diameter of the tree at breast height and so forth, and relatively rigorous and easy to, to figure out. And the other, also proposed by an arborist, was that you bring in an arborist, and that arborist looks at everything and says, "Okay, this is how far I think you need to protect." My, my opinion was that we should give the applicant the choice of which way he wants to do it, he or she presumably. And on the counter, that it's a, if it's a relatively small area that's being affected in a relatively large lot, it doesn't put any, any great constraint on the, on the applicant to just use the geometric approach. It's simple, it's quick. Relatively speaking, if you've got somebody who wants to build a large property, or they're, you know, maybe it's going to harm something, and maybe it's not. And on a relatively small lot, it could well be worth that person's time and money to, to get the more burdened, some kind of analysis done, at least not more expensive analysis. And so you, you should just let that, let the applicant choose. That's a long-winded way, and I don't think we've got any resolution on that, whether that was a good idea, or whether we should choose the geometric one or the, or the expert one.
Well, I understand it now, and if you, if you do decide that there is consensus to see that, the way I would add it is just, as, as you said, keep the, the geometric approach, which is what is in here now, and then just say, that's an optional measure, that the applicant can choose to have a certified arborist come in and evaluate on a tree-by-tree basis, where that tree protection zone should be exclusive of the geometric rules, something like that.
Something like that, yeah. So the default, the given geometric rule, and the-
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's a mechanical way for that. I still would want to hear that there's at least some consensus to see that go forward.
So, a related issue, I think, where we first defined DTH as diameter of a breast height. Well, I see that, my first question is, some people are taller than others. And elsewhere-
Four and a half.
Exactly, so why don't we use four and a half feet?
It is in here on, on the-
But it was used other-
Yeah, we've, we've used both, and we should probably just use four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet is a standard.
We should be using four. I figured that was the case.
Yeah, that's what we do, I've used both in here.
So I guess I, what I wanted to know was, were we talking about adjacent properties? The protective zone on adjacent properties, if somebody's building a lot on adjacent properties, they have a tree there that-
Well-
If I remember correctly.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's a, that's a key part of this, is that we would expand that to adjacent properties we don't now.
Yeah. So where, do you remember, where are we, where are the gracing in those?
On page two, number five, we talked about adjoining property.
Yeah, bottom of the page there.
Right, it's the bottom.
It goes on to page three. That may be a case, you know, when you have a tree on an adjoining property, the arborist may or may not have permission to go out there, so on the adjoining property, that may be a case where you have to do a, either just rely on the geometric calculation because you don't have the ability to go on their property.
Or look from, from the applicant's property.
Well, you can see it, but if-
It's hard to believe that the roots of the affected area is going to be beyond the line of sight from the-
Oh, no, you'll be able to see it, the question is if they have to actually go over there and examine the tree more closely, or probe into the ground closer to the tree off of that, off of their client's property, but that-
My, my guess is, putting myself in the, in the position which I am, being the property owner of property adjacent to one we're building and going on, that I, I would be surprised to find a case where the person would say, "No, you can't come on my property in order to try to protect my tree."
No, no, I, I would agree with that. I think the more common problem that we see is that we have no idea, we can't get ahold of that property owner, they're an absentee property owner, they live far away, we can't, don't have a phone number, we wrote them a letter, we can't get ahold of them. So they don't go on the property.
But an arborist usually stay off of somebody's property in that case, huh?
They should.
Okay.
So that may be a red herring issue, but I think that's a possibility here. But I don't think, I mean, I think the alternative works fine. If they can't come on the property, they can't go on the property, and that's that.
Friendly water, like.
I still like the alternative number two option.
Which is?
Where you would have the arborist.
Always have the arborist.
Yeah, I would. We're Tree City USA, you guys. And we're not as green as we used to be.
I agree with you on that, I'd rather have, always have the arborist.
Okay, I, I don't see any reason not to invite a, a motion. Is there a motion on this matter?
What's, what's the cost to have an arborist, you know, give you an opinion on this?
I know what it costs our arborist. We have a contract arborist who goes out and- We have a contract arborist who goes out and does the evaluation for us, and it's, you know, sort of in the $300, $400 per lot, or per tree, $300, $400 per permit range. So that can be anywhere from one to three or four trees.
Well, right now, isn't it about three trees that people should have up on their property? Don't we suggest that, or encourage it?
We encourage it, yeah.
On the lot size?
Yeah, it would depend on the lot size, but...
It's not an ordinance requirement in a landscape requirement. So there may be some encouraging language in there, but not a mandatory three trees per lot, or anything like that.
We're just trying to figure out a number, if we're trying to figure out what it might cost, but...
Yeah, actually, given that answer, I, I don't, in the scope of what it's gonna be costing somebody to have the work done, I think that's not a big number to worry about.
So is it that many trees?
In that case, well, it depends on the number of trees, and how much money it takes. So in that case, if we're always gonna use an arborist, this tree protection zone language would come out. We would just say, every permit has to have an arborist report that determines the impact area and the tree protection zone accustomed to that site and the streets. So that's what we're saying on that, I guess that's a motion, or you're signaling a motion.
I'm not gonna say that.
Okay, so if you'd like to make a motion.
How did you say that, Mark?
We would rewrite this to remove the language about how a tree protection zone is calculated, and instead substitute language that would require an arborist for every application to determine the tree protection zone on a tree-by-tree basis.
Why can't we have both?
Well, then you have to make a decision about it.
People don't want to have both.
Well...
Really, I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling is we want to leave the language in, in terms of the protective zone is two feet for every one-inch caliber at breast height.
Then what does it mean, then, if the arborist says, no, it's not, it's, in this case, it's greater or less than that?
Find a different arborist.
I don't think you can have both, they're not necessarily consistent.
Yeah, you could get different results, and then I guess the question is, is how do we regulate this?
Well, so then, who chooses, I mean, does the person who's doing the building decide which way they're gonna, they're gonna choose which method?
That's what I would say.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a great idea, they're gonna take the cheapest, easiest one, arborist.
Uh, I disagree, I think there are gonna be times where the cheapest one constrains them more. And they say, yeah, if you really look at this, I don't think we need to have that large a protection. So I think I can, I can get an arborist to confirm that.
We can always get an arborist.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
That's true, I mean, I feel firm about the two feet for one-inch caliber. And here again, I disagree with the arborists that City has had on a number of occasions, so. But at least we have that leverage in there.
What if you go with the two feet per inch standard, and then it would require an arborist report for that tree, if you want to go below that? So anything, anything less than that would require arborist, an arborist report on that specific tree.
I think that's compatible with the arborist's question for...
And this doesn't control for that area that fits within the foundation of the structure that built it?
Well, it does, what it doesn't do, though, is prohibit that house from going in, say.
Where, where do they want to put it? Within setbacks and so forth?
Yeah, if it's within setbacks, even though it's impacting the tree, if the arborist says there's no way to, or the engineer says there's no way to hold this house up without this foundation here, and the arborist says there's no way to protect those roots from that excavation, then in a residentially zoned lot, the house is gonna win. And it has to be that way, because of, you know, the whole way we handle housing and zoning for residences. We can't have land zone for residential uses, where in fact, we may not be allowing residences. That's why we allow residences in wetlands, for instance.
Okay, is there a motion in line with the arborist?
That would be, we'd go with the geometric approach, unless the applicant desires a smaller impact area, in which case they would have to justify that with an arborist report.
Yes. Is there a motion to that effect?
I have something with that. Thank you.
Okay, lots of seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizley?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burnham?
Yes.
Chair Lundee?
Yes. I just realized, I hope that was the only thing that we still could...
The other comments from last month are in teal or blue on this, and I feel, those were fairly straightforward, and I feel like I got them correct, unless you tell me otherwise here. With that amendment, do you want to see this in a, like the, doing stuff in a final form for making recommendations? Okay, so I'll program that for you next month.
What is... Okay, are there ongoing planning items? Oh, is there, is there a motion for the chair to be authorized to, I still didn't, okay. Is there a second?
Seven.
Without, without objection? Okay, moving on, are there ongoing planning items?
Yeah.
I mentioned this already, but Jeff Adams, who'll be your planning director, and he'll be here on the 15th, so he will be here on your 10/25 meeting. I've been communicating with him pretty regularly on agenda items, so I'm looking forward to introducing him to you, and I hope he's looking forward to working with you.
And what is the status now of Nicholson property?
They planted their wall.
I saw that.
They, I was ready to ask him about irrigation, we had some rain, so we got lucky on that, but the plants didn't die. Haven't been out there this week to check on it, and I've talked to Jeff about irrigation, and he knows that that's a concern, even if he has to hand water them there. There's no built-in irrigation system there, so he may have to do that, depending on probably whether we get rain this weekend or not. He has sold, I don't even know if you knew this, the, where the original house was, which is in the northwestern lot. That was the lot he had intended to build a house on, he had actually applied for a building permit and obtained a building permit.
He's gonna refurbish and knock down the building.
Yeah.
That's how we presented it at the council.
Anyway, he has an active building permit on it, my understanding is that he has now sold that lot. And so his lot remaining is the northeast lot, which is the one that's close to the road and down, has a, down, down lower than the other three, generally.
Interesting.
So that's, I talked to one of the new owners on several occasions about a building permit, but hasn't moved forward yet.
So how many lots are there altogether now?
Four.
There are four, so they really aren't gonna use that garden as a lot?
That's the only one Jeff Nicholson still retains, and I've not talked to him at all about a building permit on that lot. The north, excuse me, the southwestern lot was purchased by an adjoining property owner, and it's built a lot, but my understanding is they have no, at short, or at least immediate term plans to build on it.
So who owns the lot?
Owned by a homeowners association consisting of the owners of the four lots, same as the driveway.
So he can, if he can unload that last lot, that homeowners association...
Inherits the obligation to...
Moving out there with little things of the lot.
Well, they inherit the obligation to maintain both the driveway and that lot, and that wall. That wall is in the, the common area that the driveway sits in. So it's kind of part of the driveway infrastructure.
I have heard that third-hand is something that Nicholson has also bought, property next to Sweet Basels, here.
I have talked to him about that property, too.
Do you have any gossip to share?
That's on commercial, though.
That's correct, that's in a limited commercial zone downtown, same as the adjoining property. They, Jeff is working with a vendor who has applied for a land use compatibility statement for a cannabis retail facility there.
I knew it, I knew it. I knew that was what it was.
So, one, two, three on him, like, wow.
Well, we have one, the one in Jean Cope's facility does not, I haven't talked to them about anything going on there in months, so that doesn't seem to be progressing.
Is that the former Purple House?
Yes, correct.
We can be the tree capital and weed capital of this town.
We have a long way to catch up to Seaside and that story, yeah. Cannabis beach or not.
So I wanted to know, since I've been going by there, and all of a sudden, I think, half a day, what's happening with the apartments that my car has behind it?
Building permit in the queue right now, for him to rebuild that, per the application that came before you. I think the only difference you see is that that is now out of the flood zone, so the, remember, he had to elevate that a foot, foot and a half above grade for flood zone purposes. He's no longer in the flood zone because of the map amendments you adopted, and so that changes kind of how the ground floor part of that works. I haven't really looked at the plans to see if they comply with what he got approved through design review, that's a multifamily building, had to go through design review, and he won approval. If that's substantially the same, I suspect that that'll be approved by the chairman as a minor modification, the dropping of a foot. If that change is reflected in different things structurally or cosmetically, it may have to go back to DRB, but I haven't done that review yet.
So would there be a possibility that he would actually change the foundation instead of now? The height of that?
I honestly haven't, he had to elevate the building for flood purposes under the current, under the code that was in place when you reviewed it, but that's changed, so it drops the building a foot or a foot and a half, so you can have, and that's important, because he wants to have handicap access on some of those, it makes all those ramps lower, it really does make that an easier build for the handicapped accessibility components. But I haven't really had a chance to look closely at the plan and see how he's handled that.
It gives him more effective building height, I guess.
Yeah, it doesn't get him a third story.
Because he has a third story.
It does, it does make it, yeah, and that came out during design review. It's a cramped building in terms of heights, he had to go with minimal ceiling heights in both floors to accommodate the pitch roof and the floodplain elevation. So this gives him a little more breathing room on both of those counts.
Thank you. Any, go to the order. Okay, Mayor Ger.
Thanks very much, everybody. Do you have a few minutes?
Sure.
Really?